Okay, so, all right, so we're out here at the Lake County Republican Party, and we've got Tim Sullivan, who is running for reelection for county board. So, Tim, again, why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us a bit about your background and why people should vote for you.
Well, thank you. It's a great opportunity today. I just spoke to a group here in the Republican headquarters. I am seeking reelection to the Board of County Commissioners. I have a proven track record of conservative and Republican values, and I need your vote going forward. When I came into office almost eight years ago, the unemployment rate in Lake County was over 10%. We actually, because of our change in policies and going pro-business, we lowered that to almost 3%. And now with the pandemic, things are back to that high rate again. So it's a terrible time to change from one person of experience who has a track record to an unproven individual. So I seek your vote to stay on the county commission. We have lowered ad valorem taxes for the last four years to overcome some, a large tax increase that I voted against many years ago. And so I'm a known quality. I've got great background and experience. I've been a mayor, a city commissioner, I've been on the school board, and so I understand what Lake County is about. I also understand that this is where my children and grandchildren live, and I'm going to make Lake County keep it great, and keep it great for not just this generation, but the generations to come. And so that's why I'm seeking reelection to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, one last question is that one of your opponents sent out a hit piece that I fully believe were all wrong. Would you like to address that?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that forward. For instance, it says in that piece that I raised taxes $30 million, or some phenomenal number like that. We have not raised taxes to do that. We've experienced growth in Lake County, but only at about a 5% rate. For instance, 60% of that new revenue is because the value of your property went up.
Go ahead.
Finally, 40% of that is from new growth. And new growth, we levy impact fees, and so that new growth really pays for itself moving forward. The other thing I was questioned on during that piece was my residency. I've lived in District One since I've been in office. And so, as a matter of fact, it's been proven many, many times over, but they continue to bring it up. And lastly, there was a piece about, because I sit on a Board of Directors of something called Consolidated Mining. I do not appreciate them back that are running that down. Consolidated mining, consolidated minerals, I should say, does not own a sand mine. They use sand, but they don't own any sand mines. And so they have over 100 jobs. And it's an employee-owned company, not a Fortune 100 company, that brings jobs and happens to have their headquarters here in Leesburg. And I've been asked to be a part of that Board of Directors based on my financial and community experience.
Okay, so one last time, who are you and what are you running for?
I'm Tim Sullivan, County Commissioner, District One, seeking reelection.
Great, thanks.
Two-year term, two-and-a-half-year term on the Lake County School Board. So, which was the most thankless job I ever had.[271.77][271.77](Laughter). But, so, my goal today is to answer any questions that you guys might have. And Gal, Lake County District One, I'll give you an example. My opponent has put out information saying that I've levied $30 million more in taxes. We actually lowered the mileage rate. That new money came in from two sources. About 60% of why that money came up is because the value of your home or your business has gone up. About 39 to 40% is new business that's come in and come into our community. When I came into office, and I'm going to relate that back, when I came into office, the unemployment rate in Lake County was a little over 10%. And so I said, and there's some other facts that I looked at. 70% of the revenues that come into Lake County government are off the backs of homeowners. And 78% of those 70 were in the Save Our Homes program, which means their valuation could only go up about 3% compared. So I said, for us to just expand public services, we gotta find, we gotta change that mix somewhere. So I went on a crusade with some of my fellow commissioners to bring in more business and industry to Lake County. Proger Center that we're bringing in, which is a $110 million facility that will provide 400 high-paying jobs is an example of some of the fruits of our efforts. And I can't take credit for all that, and that's not my point. But my point is, because we changed our philosophy about things, we've been able to start changing that balance. We actually, during my period of time as a county commissioner, we actually got the unemployment rate down to as little as 3%. And so that's something I can be proud of. My children and grandchildren all live here in Lake County. Well, actually, I take that back. My youngest one, my oldest one, lives in, actually lives in Ocala, but works in Lake County. Everybody works for Lockheed Martin. I have, let's see, my daughter recently got married about two years ago. And so I went from one grandson to four. And they're all great kids, but they keep me busy. Relating back to that grandfather's and father's status is, I know how important it is to have the community, where people can grow up in that community, where they can build a career in that community and feel safe about doing that. And, you know, healthcare is very important. We have three hospital systems in Lake County that provide not only employment, but one of the reasons people want to move here is because we've got a great healthcare system. So, you know, we have to encourage those kind of things moving forward. Let's see, what else I want to talk about? Look at my brochure and I'll tell you.[493.61][493.61](Laughter). I will tell you why I'm running for reelection. Probably my original plan, and I don't know if I ever expressed that to anybody, was to do two terms. And those two terms took me to where I am now. I'm 66 years old. But this will be my last term, and I'll tell you why that is. I'm very, let's see, very happily married to a wonderful woman who's stood up with me for almost 38 years. And I promised her we were going to retire at 60, so I'm six months, six years over that date. And so she said 70 is it, and so this will be my last term, because if I get reelected, or when I get reelected,
Yes, it'll be 70.
I'll be 70 years old, and I'm going to retire and try to spend more time with my grandchildren.
That's young.
Yeah, I know. Well, heck, look at the President of the United States.
Yeah, that's right.
And I could take that test that he put in through. I'm very certain. Let's see, and...
Talk a little to us, if you don't mind, about the budget, about the county budget, like how much it is, and how you feel it's apportioned, and what we're going to need more money for, and how you feel about dividing it differently, if that's going to be necessary.
Good, good idea. Good, good question. Well, most of our budget, most of the dollars that come in, and I think I explained this earlier, go to the constitutional office. The sheriff gets 60%, that makes up about 60% of the budget. Then the supervisor of elections, the property appraiser, the clerk of the court, and the tax collector. And so most of the money goes there. Where we've been able to find efficiencies are in the county government part. Some of that has to do with technology. Some of it has to do, for instance, our building department. You don't pay anything for building part. It's an enterprise, though. So the fees that people pay to pull building permits and those kind of things all pay for the building part. And we've actually have a reserve in there to...
Tell me what you said.
Have a reserve in there so that when times get slow, then we don't have to go back to the general fund. The, we, part of the budget, for instance, during my time, we re-initiated or revamped the penny sales tax. Okay, that's an, and it's actually an infrastructure sales tax. So that one extra penny that you pay, we actually split that three ways. The schools get 1/3 of that penny. The municipalities get 1/3, and the county gets 1/3. Of the 1/3 that the county gets, we divided that up between public safety, quality of life, and those kinds of things, so we can adjust those going forward. For instance, and infrastructure is another part of that, public works. So we really look, as a matter of fact, just Tuesday, we cut a million dollars out of the proposed budget so that we could actually lower the ad valorem rate a little bit.
A million dollars, wow.
Yeah, the budget's about $450 million total. But that's every revenue source of everything. So for instance, we get state revenue sharing, which is the sales tax. That's down about $1.5, $2 million in this year, in this upcoming budget, that we know of. I think some of this is a philosophy, but some of it just, just through experience tells me that this won't be the bad budget year. If probably the pandemic keeps going on and we don't return the economy up, then that's going to be the most difficult time we'll be. Next year, but not this, not the budget we're working on now, but the budget we'd work on going forward.
For 2022.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that, some of that's based on my conversations with businesspeople. Obviously, I'm on the campaign trail. My biggest supporters are businesses. I've been saying that. And that's why I'm hearing from them. So we look at the budget every year, but we also try to look at it over a five-year period. We watch things that are done. So for instance, you'll see, like, if we didn't complete a capital project, that money will roll over. So if it doesn't get spent in this year, it'll go into next year's budget, but it'll show on revenue. So you can't, you know, in government, you show every penny that comes in. So for instance, we have about $10 million to $14 million in reserves. And that's for emergencies. And, I think I'll just say it. My opponent said that we let our bond rating go down. Well, when did we let our bond rating go down?
Irma.
It was after Hurricane Irma.
Yes.
So we spent $10 million to fix Hurricane Irma issues. We only get reimbursed $7.5 million of that. So, and to be honest, we just got the last million or two million this year.
That's like two, three years later.
Right. Well, and that's kind of a false narrative a little bit, because they did lower our rating, but our rating was already so good it really didn't affect things. And two, even in their write-up, they said, you know, the conservative nature of Lake County government has been very good to them because they have so much room in administering their ad valorem tax that if in any event of emergency, they have that to fall back on. So, not that we'd ever do that, hopefully, but, yes, ma'am.
I was just at a Taveras planning and zoning meeting. They're passing more development along Highway 19 going south, by 561 where that Publix is. And that whole corridor is just a mess because of poor traffic. And at least four of us, including myself, spoke about the lack of action by the city of Taveras to fix the traffic patterns at Dead River Road, as well as down there by Publix in the 561 intersection. There are people being cut off. One person you know, Don Care, was there. He'd been cut off while he was towing a trailer, and he ran over the curb and damaged the wheel on his trailer because people are constantly trying to cut into the line, trying to turn left going down south on 561. And the answer that we get, and again, it was, is that the county and the state are refusing to do anything about the traffic, and it's their roads. And so then we got a statement, I got on the video, where the head of the mining department basically came down to, well, we're going to risk expanding development, and at some point in time, it'll be enough accidents that maybe the county and the city will do something. So then my question would be, would be why, what can you do in the board? Because I know you spent some money recently, $10 million, I think, you bonded out, or you loaned, got loans for doing some traffic. But it's not enough for that whole corridor. And then at the same time, just they had a protest by taxpayers down there led by Danny Page and other watchdogs at City Hall about overdevelopment and the lack of attention to traffic. Now, when is somebody going to provide the leadership to fix the traffic problems first and to stop development approvals and permits until that is done? This week?
Not this week. Okay, you got, there's two issues there. One, State Road 19 is a state road.
Right.
So that's where all the funding comes from.
But you have a lobbyist, and why can't you get those clowns to fix the intersections?
They're not finished, can I finish?
Okay.
And we need to, we do need at the state level to change the formula. Let me give you a great example. That's exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, that's what I want.
We, okay, you got, in the state road system, you have basic roads, and then you have strategic intermodal systems. Strategic intermodal systems are where all the commercial traffic runs. And so 27 is a strategic intermodal system. The turnpike, 75, 441, and so that's supposedly a different part of money. So when we, when they put in a new turnpike exchange in Mineola, so we had to connect that to Highway 27. Now, we had already had $20 million to put into that program, about a $30 million project. So we went to the state legislature and said, hey, if you could give us $10 million to connect these two strategic intermodals, then it wouldn't affect the normal allotment of dollars that we get. And that allotment of dollars from the state road department or state Department of Transportation is based on population. So we're always going to kind of be behind the power curve on that. Well, initially, they, the legislators all promised us, okay, we can come up with a special allotment or whatever, $10 million to pay for that. When it got to Department of Transportation, they said, oh yeah, we'll do that, but they took it out of our current allotment as opposed to a special appropriation from the state legislature. So that's one of the things that we're working on trying to do. And because they're also moving some dollars, well, because highway coming in out of Sumter County on 48, and then it turns into, where the turnpike is, where the village is going to be, in Pocahontas area, 473, that's what that is. That's going to be a strategic intermodal system, all the way to 75. So we got to maximize what we do with the state level by just who you're talking about, our lobbyists. And two, we've got to get our own legislators in the mix to fight for us to get some of that done. Because you're exactly right. That's not the only place we got that from.
Can you increase the impact fees then? I know it's a political hot potato, but they got to do something if...
The impact fees are actually pretty good. Most of, because, but you can only use them on new construction.
I'm told that, and they brought this up, they said you collect the impact fees from this intersection, but then you spend it elsewhere. You don't, they, there's no requirement, you spend it in the area where it's generated.
That's incorrect. Now, when I came into office, we did change the, we had 20 impact, I think it was 20 impact fee areas. So you could only spend that money in that. So I changed that to four. Because highways are a system of systems. So if you can only spend that little money in one little five-mile area, you'll never get to the system of systems you need to take care of. So that's one of the things we've done. We do have a five-year plan that we review each and every year, and the priorities get changed all the time. So that's two areas that we're working on. There's another area, for instance, you're right, we just borrowed $10 million at 1.85%. So, talking about bonds earlier. If any of y'all can go get money at 1.85%, I'd like to see it done. But let me know, because I'll get in on that game.
But now it's a debt. It locks up some of your revenue when you're not, your lower revenue now.
But we came out of penny sales tax. So the penny sales tax had $2 million going to public. That's right. I'm not going to hit that. So, for instance, we're using that $10 million on current infrastructure, because you can't use impact fees to fix current roads. We use a Wisconsin road system that evaluates roads. 10 being a perfect road, 1 being a road that you got to totally replace. Right, like on your, so. So at 3.4%, or when a road gets to 3 to 4 on that scale, if you don't fix it, then it goes below that, and you're not only just fixing, repaving, you're totally tearing out the foundation in what would cost you maybe $700,000 to do, would cost you a million, million-two. But that's why we've borrowed the penny. So that gets those current roads back up to standards and buys us a couple of years to do something, yeah.
Who is it that determines what type of road it is? Because it seems to me that Highway 19 now may have changed. If you look at the number of trucks on Highway 19, it's one of those, whatever you call them.
Strategic intermodal. Because of the environmental impacts of Highway 19 going over that bridge and stuff, it was never planned to be a four-lane road. And we've kind of held to that, but then municipalities make decisions that affect that, so we'll probably have to revisit that.
We've just got so much, I mean, that new 7-Eleven is going to cause even more, I mean, two gas stations, Publix over here, McDonald's, it's going to be more tonight than it is now.
We've got, boy, I'll take you down to Brooklyn, where we'll have the same conversation. So it is tough, and it is difficult, and that's why we have to have real serious planning. We have to look at all of our options. And people don't want to talk about it, but, you know, one of the things we haven't done is we have another nickel gas tax that we could, we could let. I don't like taxes, but every county around us is already doing it. And so if you go from Orange County to Lake County, what's the price of gas different?
Tim, do you have any control on Highway 19?
No, not really.
I didn't think so, because I know...
Because it's state.
But what about 561?
561, we do.
Because they're planning on narrowing 19 north in Houston down to one lane.
They can't do that. Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm told, because of that dangerous curve.
It's not dangerous.
Yes. Oh, my neighbor, or the lady that lives there on that curve, her house has been hit three times.
Oh, wow. What do you mean, the curve on growth? Where you turn, get ready to turn on 452?
Did I answer your question, please? To the best of my ability, I guess I answered.
Well, is there any jaw-biting you can do or something, I mean, prevent annexation? I know that this is another wish list of mine, because the cities, you know, Taveras is just kind of like spanning, and they sit there, and they just keep approving these things, but they don't do anything. They don't allocate any money for roads. There's not a percent. It's like, they just point the finger at you guys, the state. And so the question is, I guess maybe what you do is use yours as a bully pulpit and explain these things, and say, you got to elect different city council people that are going to recognize these issues rather than just keep voting for growth.
Well, you need to, the solution there may be to have the state pass a concurrency law in regards to roads.
There you go.
Okay. And I'll give you an example. I sit on the concurrency board for school system. We meet once a year. And because of the, us providing them with impact fees, because we provide that 1/3 of the penny sales tax, and then they have a capital outlay fund. They are actually keeping up with all the new schools that are required to come in without borrowing money.
Maybe you could explain what happens if they don't, how concurrency gets into the whole scheme of things.
Okay, so that's a good question. So for instance, let's say a subdivision comes in, and they're in a area where they're going to add 300 homes. And in those 300 homes, they know what the impact on the school system is going to be. So if there's not capacity in that school, then they have to pay for that capacity. So, and then, you know, based, for instance, let's say the impact fees and everything else they pay, if they're not going to make up that, then they have to make that money up. So...
The developer?
The developer actually does.
Yeah, can you do anything, is it up to the cities to maybe require that the... They don't seem to ever want to require the developer to pay for traffic improvements. They've avoided it. They had one developer that agreed to in Dead River Road, but then fell out. And then they just sit there and they wait for you guys to pony up, and they blame it on you. And my view is, the city of Taveras is the one collecting all the property taxes on both sides of these roads. They should be responsible for maintaining those roads, regardless of who they belong to.
Okay, don't disagree.
Well, so can you get that passed next week?
Next week?
I don't think so.
Glad to get moving on.
All right. Anybody got any last-minute questions for me? Because I think I've already overrun my time.
Not you. I'm not talking, you're not over my head.
It's me she's talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking to the...
Anybody else have any questions?
We got here late, but we want to wish you luck.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm probably going to just stay with the red everybody anyways.
Well, in my particular race...
There's two reds, somebody.
I really, there are two red people. We have one real Republican and one...
So does a real Republican have a tattoo?
I got tattoos, but it's from cancer treatments many years ago.
Oh, that's a good question. And we mentioned outside when we were walking by, it's kind of confusing, just brought up a... Just brought up a good point.
Right.
I think that when we have our yard signs or whatever, I think all of our signs should be red and all the Democrats should just say that's all they want.
That's a good idea.
Actually, I don't disagree with you, but when I ran the first time, my opponent already had a red sign, so I...
Oh.
And so rather than change my signs, which would have cost me more money, my conservative nature said, okay, Sullivan is...because the whole point of a sign is to see... And with exception of you hardcore Republicans, most people don't pick up on that.
Well, and in the primaries, often you'll have two Republicans. So they would both have red signs. And he's trying to distinguish himself from the other Republican running in the primary.
Right. Good point. A good point. But that's a...actually, if...
Are we...do you think that I should not be overly concerned about the mail-in ballots? I got a bad feeling about that.
Actually...
The way that's going, the way it's been going to...I mean, I voted absentee in the military.
Right.
There's a big difference between absentee and mail-in ballots, and I'm not sure the general public knows.
I think you're exactly right.
My mom's in a nursing home. He works there.
Oh, yeah.
I just...
Go ahead.
I just stopped to...
So this is an open forum, and you get to...
Okay, I still am retired, obviously, for a long time, but I still work a couple days a week, and I work in a assisted living facility. I manage the activities for a company. It's hard because they're locked down.
Where at?
I'd rather not say right now because what I'm going to tell you might get back to on who's...
Poker. Poker.
Okay.
My daughter works at one, that's why.
Okay, it's...if I tell you, you'll know it.
I know who it is. She just told me.
Okay. Here's what they came last week and...
Who's they?
Well, the Board of Elections sent paperwork to my superior. She said, look, we...a lot of those people, my people that are in my area, starting in their early 80s and now, some of them are very alert, some of them not so much.
Right.
So normally, someone from their family is POA, and they take care of stuff.
Right.
So now, because of the law, they hand...they show us these that they're going to mail, not...
Not absentee.
Here's what we did. We went down and done a survey of all my people that could remember and contact their sons, daughters, whoever, that you're on a date, both absentee last year. Most of them didn't. Couple of them did. So if they voted last year absentee, they're probably in good shape. But they're...the mail-in ballots, not sure where they're coming from or who sent them. Now they're going to have, and God bless all my people I work with, now they're going to have people that are working with me, a CNAs or whoever, help these people. I'm dead set against that. Just for the fact that it could be influenced.
Exactly.
I think that that's...see, what they're saying is family members can't come in. I get it. If you're not a doctor, you're not getting in there.
We go to the window.
Her mother's birthday, we had to go to her window, and I called from the cell phone so they could talk to her. But I just see a lot of space for fraud here or misrepresentation, if you will. And I don't know that there's anything that can be done about it.
Well, there is...
Dr. Allan Hayes.
Yeah, I was just going to say...
Lexon said...
He needs to have his staff go in and do it with this.
Yeah, I will say...
See, now, a year ago, some of my people, they couldn't...what they do is, they would take them in the little wheelchair van down to Hard Rock, and they could vote in their building where they've been there for years. Well, now they can't leave unless they go into a doctor. So some of them last year, both parties came and had them vote on the property. But now, they're not letting anybody...and it's not just my facility, it's state...I understand...
Right, right.
And I said to my superior, I said, is this just...I was curious, I said, is it just us? And why is it? And she said, if it's a nursing home, that's the way they're going to do it. And I am...there are a lot of people in nursing homes in Florida, and I think it could sway...
I've worked in nursing homes...
And that's a big problem.
And I'll guarantee you that most of the employees in those facilities are Democrats.
Well, I was...you're exactly right.
I know.
I could have said that.
I've worked in nursing homes too. Activities department usually helped with filling out their mail-in ballots if family couldn't do it because either they couldn't see it, they couldn't write...
There's a difference...there's a big difference between the absentee ballot though, because they sent that to them. They know that they're registered, whoever, Democrat, Republican. But they're just random mail...I'm dead set against that.
Dead set, yeah.
Yeah, because they really...I thought they...did the supervisor election send that out? Because usually you have to request it, because I know for a fact...
You have to request it.
They sent them an email.
All right.
Because I said, well, we're...because we got crazy emails, you know? I get...supposedly, my system's supposed to block outside, but my supervisor gets...and she said that the email came...and they were...you know, there's 128 people in the whole building. They wanted a response at night. Oh, some of these people don't know what they had for breakfast. Give me a break. So should these family members be contacted? I don't know.
I am a family member. I have a mother in the assisted living there.
Okay.
I am not allowed to bring the ballot back to her to have her sign the envelope. I cannot go see her. I have not seen her since February. I know exactly what you're talking about.
See, I'm lucky. My mom's there, and he can go in.
Right. I'm ready to get a job there. That's the only way you can get in.
And some of the people have resorted at to see their mother, father, whoever, or husband, for that matter. It's terrible. It's a terrible, terrible situation.
But I just heard they're one of 100 in the whole state of Florida that doesn't have any COVID. But they're...these old people are dying of loneliness and neglect.
Loneliness, most likely.
Here's what's happened to...they're feeding these people, and they're feeding that whole facility, even the apartments and the rooms.
Yeah.
And God bless those people that are doing that. But what's happened, and some of these people, I used to drive the bus for these people. Five years ago, I was taking them to Hard Rock. Now some of them can't remember what they...I know their families, I know where they were raised, I know what they did. I've known these people for years, and I love them to death, and I just hate to see somebody, anybody, take advantage of these people. And in my book, that's exactly what's happening.
And their hands are tied, you know? The people that work there with them.
Right, right.
Their hands are tied. I get that. Well, as a county commissioner, do you have a thought on that? There must be a question in here somewhere.
I don't know the options. Is there anything...
I know that the absentee ballots are reviewed very, very well. I've actually sat on that board that does that review. So if the signature that they have on record is nothing like the signature that's on that form, then that 90% of the time gets thrown out.
And that's why I need the paper to sign it, because at 99, her writing is...
Right, right. And some of that is, you can change though, because for instance, if you do that, the supervisor election now reaches out and say, did you send this form?
Yeah.
You know...
But my mother's signature, maybe when she...
Absolutely. That's the biggest issue.
Now she's 88, and her signature isn't close.
The point I was making is most of these people, God bless them, that are in this condition or situation, have a POA, family member.
Diane, yeah.
So they're not even...if you're not a doctor, and it's not...the state's involved in a lot of this. They set the guidelines because of COVID madness, you know? And I get it.
That madness is right.
Yeah.
Diane, you had a question?
Well, I've been listening, and they are sending if anybody now, you say you know these people, if they were here in Florida and were foreign residents. But if they were out of state, they are going to get a ballot from that other state, and if there's a Democrat in there, they will sign it and send it in. I mean, this is one of their scams. I mean, this is a scam. And a lot of people that are registered here and come here, but they're Democrats, you bet a nickel, they will get another ballot from another state, and some of them will send it in.
Thanks so much for coming in. Thank you, Commissioner.
If you need to get hold of me, please, you can do that through my website.
Brochure website.
I'm obviously not a technical genius. Being a general, I had guys that took care of it.